Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Tuesday, March 1st, 2022. It is 4:00 P.M. And this is a meeting of the Acushnet Board of Selectmen. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
My pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, do I have a motion to open the meeting?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Second on the agenda tonight, minutes that need to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. Gentlemen, I make a motion to table this agenda item until next meeting.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, meeting mail. Meeting mail. Patriot Half Marathon, Saturday, June 18th, 2022. Gentlemen, this is the 16th Annual Patriot Half Triathlon. It's scheduled for Saturday, June 18th, 2022. The Patriot Half is based at Camp Cathedral in East Ritan. It involves athletes swimming, then biking, then running. As in the past, athletes will utilize selected roads in Acushnet during the run segment of this event. Patriot Half starts at 7:00 A.M. And athletes will be running on the roads of Acushnet between 10:30 and 3:30 P.M. Maintaining the highest standards of safety for athletes, pedestrians, motorists is our highest priority. As the event draws closer, I'll reach out to the Acushnet Department to coordinate police details at road intersections on the road course. This year's race will comply with all safety requirements of the USA triathlon sanctioned event. Attaches the event notification form. I must submit to MassDOT with signatures from the Acushnet Board of Selectmen, police, and fire in order to receive the appropriate permit for use of Route 105. We appreciate the opportunity to have our event come through Acushnet and would like to make a $250 donation to a nonprofit organization in Acushnet. Please let me know what organizations you recommend for this donation. As you see, gentlemen, we have the forms. They're signed off by the police chief, fire chief. You just need our signature. So do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Second, we have the meeting mail. We have a letter of resignation from Finance Committee Gail Rodrick. It is very brief. Says, "Gentlemen, regrettably, I must resign from the Acushnet Finance Committee. I advised Dr. Boucher of my intention to resign last week. And here is the official notice." Gentlemen, motion to accept resignation from Gail Rodrick.
So moved, second with regret.
All in favor?
Sir Rodrick was an asset to the Finance Committee.
Absolutely. Absolutely. He is a service. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Accept the resignation. Next on our agenda, under appointments. We have an open meeting for the approval of a package store wine and malt license for the new New England farms being constructed at the intersection of Main Street and Hathaway Road. That Wing Road, Wing Road, I should say. Gentlemen, can we open this? I have a motion to open this public hearing.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have representatives.
Yes.
It's up to the podium and name, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is John Ieta. I'm from McDermott, Illinois, located at 28 State Street, Boston. With me is Eric Roslin. Eric is the proposed manager of record as well as the director of operations for New England Farms. I just have a real quick handout if I can approach. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I want you to hot dog. And just to interject, we begin to recuse ourselves from this portion of the meeting.
Yeah.
What's the other? So, gentlemen, we just, Mr. Rodrick?
Yes.
Because of your passion.
I work in this industry, so I'm going to recuse myself from this portion of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Let me know what's, okay?
Sure.
So this is the, let the record show. This is the New England Farms. It's to be built at 158 Main Street, right down the street from there, as you know. So just briefly, by way of experience, Eric has been involved with the retail industry for over 25 years. He has extensive experience, not only in the retail sales, but specifically as it pertains to sell in service of alcohol. So for about the last 12 years or so, he's been often on as a manager of record at New England Farms, both in Carver, Middleborough, and more recently in New Bedford. So he has quite enough experience for supervision and management on alcohol sales. New England Farms itself is a smaller chain convenience store. It started in 2000, sorry, 1998. And since 2009 or so, they did start acquiring beer and wine licenses throughout their stores. They had four prior stores, which recently sold. They did have beer and wine. And they do have a store currently in New Bedford, which does have beer and wine sales. So it is part of their business model to have that. And throughout that entire time, it's over 12 years now, they have no history of any violations, whether it's through the local boards or the AVCC. So they really are an experienced operator. Eric is an experienced manager and has great control of that. And the concept of itself is one-stop shopping. So they really pride themselves on great customer service as well as knowledgeable and educated staff. It's a situation where they can go in, you can gas up, you can grab convenience store grocery items. They can also get prepared meals to go as well, which is a nice feature. And with that, they want to offer customers the ability to grab a six-pack of beer or bottle of wine as part of their shopping. Again, this is a real small portion of their sales. It's probably only about 10% of their sales area. It's going to be a five-door cooler and one half of a gondola on the sales floor. And this is a model that's really worked for them. They're not looking to, they don't really see it as being a competition to some of the other stores in town. It's really just a convenience. Someone's still going to go to the liquor store, get what they want. They're not going to come secondly to get beer and wine. So it's really just to capture the customers that are already coming to the store and be able to offer that service. Again, the way they can attest to their, and accredit to their perfect track record is they really have, you know, state-of-the-art facilities. It's going to be a modern, open store, great lines of sight from the cash register, the security cameras. It's well-lit. They have a trained staff that will be on hand. And the POS system itself, it is an ID scanner that's built in. So in addition to the staff, which is going to card every single person that comes in here, that's been their policy. So anyone purchasing beer or wine will be carded. In addition to that, they have a POS system that any time there's an age-restricted product, it will flag that. The clerk has to check an ID, run it through the scanner, and put in the validated birth and compare it to the person in front of them. So it's really a great system that's worked very successfully in the past, and they've had no issues because of that. On top of that, if there's off-hours of sale, which, you know, they are anticipating to open at 5:00 in the morning, some mornings, a couple things. They can lock the coolers up so none of those, you know, the beer or wine can be sold. And additionally, the POS system itself will lock them up. So if by accident something does get up to the register, a bottle of wine or something, the sale will not be able to be completed because of that reason. So they can put the hours of operations in, which, you know, which are very helpful as well. So as much as because you want to take out the human error, there's also, you know, other ways to prevent that from happening. So we really think it's going to be, you know, they invest in the communities that they've been part of. This is the New Bedford store that I gave you the flyer of that shows some of the pictures of that. This store will be probably 20%, 25% smaller, but it just gives you an idea of kind of the cleaned, modern store, you know, that they're looking to have in town, and I think it's going to be a great asset. So it's something that, again, the customers will come to expect and appreciate to have this added convenience. And it's just something we're looking to do to add as an additional grocery item, you know, for the town and for the customers. Certainly have an open up for any questions that you may have or any concerns.
Well, Mr. Gaspar?
Mr. Chairman, you first.
That was one of my questions I did have is what do you anticipate the hours of operation to sell? Or what are the hours of operation?
Sure.
You just mentioned 5:00 A.M.
Yes.
They're going to be opening.
So they will be opening 5:00 A.M. most days. That's what they have done by statute, by law. They can only start selling alcohol at 8:00 A.M. And then that would close at 11:00 P.M. So the laws that are allowed by statute, which are 8:00 A.M. to 11:00 P.M., and I believe you can correct me if I'm wrong, on Sunday hours is it 10:00 A.M. to usually 8:00 P.M.?
Yeah, normally in the past, when they went from the 12:00 to the Sunday, on the Sunday license, we would ask, we'd normally give the 12:00 P.M.
Yep.
Opening and then ask to come back in and ask for the 10:00 A.M.
Okay. Meaning get your feet settled and then come back, see how things go or?
I think the night hours, though, on the Sundays later than 8:00 P.M.
It may be.
It's 11:00.
I think it's 11:00 all the way, but I think, yeah, I think it's 11:00 all the way. But usually they tend to have early hours. They may have even, Eric indicated they may close at 10:00. But they want to have the ability that if it is busy and if it's times holidays, things like that, they don't want to put themselves at a disadvantage to any of the other, you know, stores.
He already asked one of my questions because I don't see the license with the hours of operation for the liquor license, and I think that was a good question.
Sure.
There was some discussion how this New England Farms has tried to transpire it over there on that corner and opposition. And then there were some people that had mentioned the liquor license, and you'd have to be so many feet from a church.
Okay.
Has that been dissolved?
It has. So in the past, it's probably 15, well, probably longer than, I've been practicing, maybe over 20 years now. It used to be a per se, if they opposed it, you could not get a liquor license. So that has been changed. They have to be provided notice. And so the board just has to find it not to be detrimental to either church, school, hospital, to their teachings or their activities. So it has changed. It used to be a per se, they could, you know, vote no, and then that was the end of it. And the law has changed on that. And again, we, I know they were within the radius that is 500 feet. Church, the schools, and the hospitals, so I know they fell within that 500 foot.
But it has no impact. We shouldn't be concerned as a board.
You should not be. No, I mean, if the board for some reason felt it to be somehow, you know, egregious to the findings, that's up to the board's determination. My understanding is there is a restaurant that serves all alcohol right beside the church. So my guess is, you know, and if they're not here to oppose or speak of it, my guess is, you know.
I just want to make sure.
No, actually, so.
We're not going to do something and then come to find out somebody's going to appeal.
No, no. If they're here to oppose, then the board would have to make a determination as to whether they feel that their position is stronger and weighs heavily in terms of that.
Understood. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. At this time, I would ask anyone in the public, was it a comment about in favor or in opposition of this? But as I see, there are no people here attending concerning this public hearing. So if that's it, at this time, we can make a motion to close the public hearing session of this?
I'd like to make a motion first, Mr. Chairman, to approve.
Got to close first.
Want to close the meeting?
Close the public hearing.
The public part of it.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the beer and wine license as presented.
Very good, and I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Very good, gentlemen. Looking forward to it.
I'll have it ready tomorrow.
Probably sooner than we need it. We got some work to do.
Unless you're going to be seen on the street corner without, that my job can be done and let him worry about it.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Now it's my job.
Thank you.
Actually, Eric, can I have your phone number?
Yeah.
Hold on.
I'm pretty sure get the other number in.
Yep, we can bring back.
71.
475.
8801.
Listen, I can send the P.O.P. by contact.
Perfect, thank you, Vanessa.
I'll have it ready.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We'll have it signed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, for the board's edification, the Safety Committee has met concerning issues of traffic and parking adjacent to that location. And we've been discussing also along Wing Street because in our discussions, we noticed that entities like this, if they have trailer trucks that decide they want to come in and buy coffee, et cetera, in the morning, they park along the street and then it impedes traffic. So the Safety Committee will be issuing a report to this board next meeting and a recommendation as far as whether there should be no parking signs along the street.
Very good. I actually would endorse that just for the simple reason that you also have, as Mr. Kelly has alluded to, those folks, but also people offloading goods to the store itself. You don't want to be congested up that corner and causing aggravation within the community. So it would be a great idea.
Very good. Next on the agenda is Horizon Poll Installation. We have two tonight. This first one for a public hearing is for the, what they call a J.O. poll on the southeastally side of Main Street at, this is the address. It's like 550 Main Street. It is. So we have a gentleman here from, you're independent contractor, representing Horizon?
Yes.
Excellent. Name, please, for the record?
Don Vaughner.
Don Vaughner? Very good, Don. You have the floor.
Okay, it's, as you noted, it's a one joint-owned poll.
Well, actually, I do need to be procedural and open this public hearing.
Sure.
Okay, so gentlemen, do I have a motion to open the public hearing concerning the poll placement at 550 Main Street?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Vaughner?
Thank you. Yeah, it's just a one joint-owned poll. It's going to be placed to the left of what you see as a driveway at 550 Main. There's a pole stake in there now showing where it's going to be placed. And the purpose for it is there's a solar farm going in out back, and they need to redirect the electricity back and forth from that pole.
Is that pole positioned on the property of 5, and that's the Westgate property?
Is that, I believe? I believe it's right at the edge of the right of way.
Okay.
Otherwise, they would have needed an easement from 550.
Okay. And that's, and that's the, who's putting in the, I believe, is the, where the solar farm is going on their property? I guess that's my question, is the pole going on the property of the solar farm?
Or in the town's layout of the road?
It should be in the town's layout of the road, which is the purpose for this petition. Otherwise, they would have just, they wouldn't have bothered you with it. They would have just put the pole in with the, with the pole owner.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Gaspar?
How far in from the edge of the road is it? Because we've had a problem with a lot of poles being located within like two feet of the edge of the road. It seems kind of dangerous that these poles.
It's much further than that. I don't know the exact measurement without the map here, but I was just at the site, and it looks like it's about 12 feet.
Really, 12 feet in?
It's behind.
On the map that I see, it's like right in line with the existing poles. So you're saying it's going to come and then jog in and go back out?
Are you looking at just like the little visio map that was presented?
Yeah, it's not a good map.
Yeah.
Looks like, you know, it's hard to see, but it's just right in line.
Yeah, it's just supposed to give you the general overview, what it looks like. If you go and look at where the stake is, thank you, yeah. Yeah, so this is just, it's just to show you about where it's supposed to go and the approximate measurement to the scotch way. I just went and looked at the stake itself because I didn't place it. I would have to estimate above 12 feet because it's behind a rock that's there as well.
It's pretty far. Not a whole transformer of some sort or?
I don't know the, okay, yeah, sorry.
Just here for the pole.
Yeah.
Not what's on it. Okay. Well, very good. At this time, I would ask any people from the public if they're in favor or opposition of this. And as I see, no one's here for this public hearing, so at this.
Would you mind opening up? I just took pictures. I just want to get a better read on the picture.
Oh, sure. Most certainly.
Before you vote on it.
Sure.
Because there are two poles, two stakes, I should say. There's one that is three or four feet off the roadway, and there's another one that's.
That one would sound more like the one that you're here for because we don't own 12 feet off the edge of the road.
Right, yeah. I'm looking at the second one. It looks like, more like 15 feet. So I, now that I'm thinking about it, it's probably more like the other poles where it's a few feet off the road, just like in line with the other ones. So to answer you.
You said 12 feet, and I know the layout's never that far.
Yeah, I think that's going to be the second pole in that starts going in.
Sister in pole, yep.
With an easement that you guys wouldn't be bothered with.
Okay.
So I'm going to have to retract and say that it's probably more like what you think. A few feet off the road, just like all the others in the pole line, just one more there.
Okay.
So if I can amend what I said, I would rather do that.
Most certainly, most certainly. And as I mentioned, there's no one here in opposition of it. So at this time, I'd like to disclose the public hearing part of this meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good, gentlemen. And I have a motion to approve polls at 550 Main Street.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And the explanation.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Paper straight here, and next on the agenda, we have another poll installation. This poll is being installed on Hay Street, which is over here downtown Acushnet, over by the Cumberland Farms. I believe that's Hay Street, right over there. And we have Ross.
Yes, Ross Billid, representing Horizon, New England.
Okay, very good. Ross, just give me one second because I have to open up the public hearing concerning this poll installation. Gentlemen, do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, thank you, Ross. You have the floor.
Hey, sure. Looking to place this poll, it's poll 61, over one quarter. Hay Street, this purpose to serve a new home that's being built at 11 Hay Street. So we're extending some lines down from John Street. We're just using this new poll placement to extend the lines so we don't have to cross property lines from the existing poles. So it's just to avoid aerial trespassing.
Very good. And once again, I see no one in the audience in favor or opposing this, or any comments? So gentlemen, do we have any comments here? Aye?
Same idea in line with your other poles, right?
Correct.
Wouldn't make more sense to be jogged in 12 feet, right?
Correct. It would be standard three to four feet. I wasn't able to take a look at the location before I came out here, so I wasn't able to look at the stake. But I'm assuming it's going in line, yes.
Usually, you're within a couple of feet of, from the other lines.
You don't have lines to stretch that far, right?
You don't have the excess capacity in your existing lines.
Correct.
To be pulling poles.
Okay, very good. And with no comments, I'll close this portion of the public hearing. Gentlemen, do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And gentlemen, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good. Ross?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Make sure it can get signed and sent off to Horizon with all their signatures.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, gentlemen, we can move on to all business. First, to all business, we have outside dining discussion. The views of matter presented once may be taken. We've received an packet, a letter from James Merritt, excuse me, the Building Commissioner, bringing up the fact of offering open dining in the restaurants. I should say outdoor dining in the restaurants after we've ended the COVID state, I would say. And when I read through it, I was trying to think about the restaurants that did utilize outside dining during COVID. I thought of Rochelle's on Main Street, I thought of Pan de Rosa on 105 by the Rochester Line. And I believe Captain's Place in the Mill utilized open dining during the COVID situation. So what we're being asked in my, from reading this, I assume, is to extend that out to the businesses if they want to have it. Is that correct, Mr. Kelly? As you read it?
I, as far as I'm concerned, it was put on by the request of the Building Commissioner. He obviously isn't here to discuss it. I have no recommendation either way. I would say that if this is going to involve a zoning change, then it's, and he talks about a legal review with minor modification may provide the necessary language. I think this is something that needs more study, if at all. And if it's a modification to zoning, then it should go before town meeting.
That's right.
And if, and the board, as you know, any articles that are coming before town meeting have to have multiple public hearings, and this will not make this town meeting.
We could still operate, we could still offer this under the, right, under the current, last year's COVID operation?
I don't know if a state of emergency still exists.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Gaspar?
So obviously, I think it was all members of this current board that was supportive to our local restaurants to provide outdoor dining while we were under the COVID-19 indoor restraints that we all had to deal with and face. And we were sympathetic to our restaurant owners and tried to do everything we could to help them, including waived license and fees accordingly. And I'm surely in that camp. However, what I, what I read here is, it is a zoning change, and it's not a very good one just because of the way the language is written. Mr. Merritt did this, and if you look on the three, it says a legal review of Article 8, Section 3.3.2 F with minor modifications. It's not, this is not simply us, the Board of Selectmen, being able to change a special permit. This is, the wording in the old bylaw says it's pretty much the same thing. Any expansion of existing use shall be made only in compliance with all relative sections of this article. The change of use must be one allowed by right or by special permit in the BV zone. So if you look at Article 8, that he references, Section 3.3.2 is what I just read from, F. He's changed this language around, and it goes from, and he's left some wording out of this. This has been changed and it's not been updated on the town's website for the bylaws, which is possible. He left business BV zone out, and it just says, "A change or expansion of use." And then it says down at the end, "This change or expansion of use must be, must be one allowed by right or special permit in the zone." I have serious concerns about that language. It's not, this is nothing, it's not only to do with restaurants, it's any business. And it's not just in the Business Village District. So it's opening that can of worms up. I don't like this particular change for us to try to accommodate our restaurants. This is any, any kind of business, is the way this is written. So the board, it would be left to the Board of Selectmen to provide that special permit or change that special permit or that requirement. Doesn't go under any kind of public hearing like it would for zoning board of appeals. Doesn't require any abutters notices. It's just at the, at the pleasure of the Board of Selectmen. I think that could, at some point, it could become very dangerous for our residents that are abutters to these kind of businesses because it's not directly for restaurants, is what I think this board is looking to do, is provide some accommodation for outdoor dining. This language that's been, you know, drafted by Mr. Merritt doesn't, doesn't do what I believe the objective of this board is to do, is try to provide convenience for outdoor dining. It's, it could be much more devastating to the community as written here. So I'm definitely not for that kind of language and that change in that because if you, if you read the bylaws, it's in the Business Village District. But it also says, "And any all-allowed uses in the Business Village District include the residential..." include the residential A District." So, now you're impacted much more than just the Business Village District, and he left out BV zone, so it's left to the zone, which, what zone is that? So, I, I, I think Mr. Loona hit, hit the nail on the head right when, at the opening arguments, that when we were discussing this is, why can't we just do something to accommodate if there's an application that was submitted here that we did for restaurants? Why, why can't we have that flexibility to say, "Hey, this restaurant wants to do it, they have ample parking, it's gonna be limited to seats," because we all know restaurants are restricted by our bylaws for how many seats you can have versus how many parking spaces you have versus this, that, and the other thing, but just because they're prior, as this change of bylaw would be prior to 1996. I think you run into a lot of problems with parking issues, if how big's the tent gonna be? How many places are you gonna allow for outdoor dining? I think that would be part of the application form to come in front of the board of selectmen and say, "Hey, you know what, you're only gonna lose three or four, but if you have somebody that's in a situation and I'm gonna use the one that's Rochelle's." They don't have the capacity to be putting tents up in, in parking spots, and where, where are these people gonna go? With parking across the street, on a, on a side street? I, I just think it's, it's complicated, as much as I, I, I wanna try to help all of our restaurants in dealing with this, they still have all that capacity indoors and then you're gonna expand the outdoors, and where are the people gonna park, that's a problem. And we see it in a lot of different areas, not only here in Acushnet, but other restaurants that I've gone to, where there's just parking everywhere, it's just kind of a nightmare. So, that's my concern, is more of a, of a public safety, dealing with this kind of business, and this is not aimed at restaurants, this is aimed at any business, and I, I don't like that idea at all.
Mr. Loona?
Yeah, I, I would ask Mr. Kelly from-
Talk to town council.
Talk to town council to see where current status is to provide temporary- I haven't been following the legislative process up there, I'm sure that there's some, either could've been legislation that's passed for the hospitality industry to give local authority and the ability to do this stuff, just check to see where things are, come back with a recommendation, but then also I think we should proactively, and I agree with Mr. Merritt though, proactively figure out a way to make it happen for restaurants to do that. I mean, you know, the outside dining is, I think it's, it's a good thing for everybody, you know, provided it's safe.
That procedurally, you can't, kept to town meetings with this.
That was my question, I wrote it down here, the procedure, just the procedure of this being presented to us is, I don't find that correct.
Right.
You know, it needs to go, it needs to go to town meeting, but making a bylaw change, this isn't the way to-
This isn't the way to do it, either for restaurants either, so, I mean, we could probably come up with some little bylaw or add it into, you know, for restaurants and try to figure something out. Well, we, we would be the special permit granting authority and we could do it on an as-needed, as-requested basis only, and not just, you know, everybody, every Tom, Dick, and Harry can do whatever they want and the expansion can happen to any business in town, that's not, that's not what that does.
So, I'll, I'll make a motion to direct Mr. Kelly to work with town council, or building inspector, or the appropriate entities, and report back on a game plan.
First of all, we'll establish, if the board still has the authority to do it-
Right.
And then we'll establish the proper methodology in doing it.
Right.
Okay, because to my knowledge, there were only three restaurants that utilized outdoor dining. Ponderosa, which, that didn't affect their parking, right, because they had it out behind the building. Rochelle's, which is behind the building, did limit access to some areas back there, but they seemed to work it out, and, and Captain's Place and The Mill. So, you know, I wouldn't want to stop them if they wanted to keep proceeding with having it for the summers, if they felt that was useful to their business and not necessary to keep it afloat like it was during COVID.
Right.
Because you couldn't sit, you had to remove the tables, you couldn't sit, remember that?
Yep.
You couldn't have toilet paper, all that stuff.
So, I agree, if there's, if there's a way for us to accommodate our local restaurants for outdoor dining, I'm all ears and I would love to do it, and I, I think, you know, it's not gonna make a town meeting for a bylaw change. I think Mr. Loona, again, specifically said, "Let's try to figure out a way to make this happen" because outdoor dining is coming, but it's, it leaves it at least for us to be able to use our own best determination on whether or not the amount that's being requested for outdoor dining is sufficient for the area where it's gonna be impacted. That's what needs to be done.
Very good, okay. On all business, we have the elder community service programs. We were presented in our packet with a draft of what it would look like, concerning the program, the income eligibility, and the application forms. So, would you like to expand on this a little bit, Mr. Kelly?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I met with the director of the COA, discussed it. A lot of the income eligibility issues she already addresses in other programs, so it could, that part of it could be done through the COA in conjunction with the other programs that they establish income eligibility for. When it comes to assigning where an individual would work, that would come into the board of selectmen's office, and you'd be dealing with appropriateness of the skill sets and appropriateness of where you need the work to be done. And, it's a good program, it helps seniors who are having issues with their paying their property taxes, it helps them with one quarter of their property taxes. It's usually funded in a separate article at town meeting for, out of free cash. Somewhere around 20,000 to 25,000 is usually what you do it at. There's a limit of 1,500 for the amount of money that you could earn. You do earn the money, but you then receive credit, and it's all handled through the treasurer's office.
So, this would be something that I couldn't, I work for the town, you give, I receive 1,500 in cash and then-
No.
Pocket it, you know? So, it'll be through a voucher system or something that would be applied to your taxes?
It's a, a journal entry, in effect, through the treasurer collector's office and the accountant's office, but they do have to look at it as income.
Okay, so, this is something that would, would be looking at making an article for this upcoming town meeting? To fund it?
To fund it.
Like you said, either 20 grand or 25,000?
Correct.
And that would control how many people could apply for this, you know, you couldn't have everybody applying for it?
Well, it's also, to get it up and started, you gotta go through all the eligibility issues. People who would advertise it, I've talked with the COA director, I've talked with the principal assessor. We are looking also, prior to any of the abatement issues that the assessor deals with, having a presentation at the COA for the seniors to make sure that they understand about all the eligibility, they understand the programs that are available to them, they understand that this community values their elders and wants to keep them in their homes. And it's quite, what we're doing is we're creating a team to actually take care of this and put it forward to the residents.
That's awesome.
Very good, gentlemen, any comments?
Great program, you know?
Support it all the way.
I appreciate that, and, on a quick note to the board, March 22nd, the COA is having a 50th anniversary of senior meals program at the COA, and is looking for volunteers to help with serving the meals or riding along when they deliver the meals, that type of thing, to celebrate the 50th anniversary of the community providing that program to the seniors.
There are times that they're doing it, you know, like-
Nine o'clock.
I'm getting dinner at nine o'clock in the morning?
No, you're providing it.
Okay.
And I'll have the director reach out to the members of the board.
Yeah, that's fine, I don't know if you guys have done that before, or done that in years past, it's a lot of fun. It's a really cool event.
Very good. Alright, next on the all business, we have road repair pothole update.
I, you have a, you have a spreadsheet that the DPW and the board of selectmen's office has worked on to put the format together, so, to show the potholes or road repairs, necessary road repairs that are reported through our social media or by telephone to the DPW, and it gives you a, we're gonna be doing this monthly to the board, so the board has an update. And it, pretty much, other than the fact that we had a difficulty getting the mix a little bit, Avon was closed for a couple days and we had to use cold patch, but other than that, they've been flat out doing this. They also, if it's a state road, they'll put cones or barrels out and then let the state know that it's their responsibility, because the state gets a little touchy if the town DPW works on the state road.
Right, state roads comprise, what, you got South Main Street-
Yeah.
From the Fairhaven line to Town of All.
That's the one that they're pretty touchy about.
North Main.
Yeah, North Main, up Country Whip, 105, Main Street.
All the way to the town line, right, it says state highway ends, I think, right up the town line.
Yeah, and then Robinson Road.
But I-
That's part of state?
Yeah, 105.
Okay, 105, yeah, yeah.
This is part of how we want to keep the board informed and make sure you folks know what's going on with this. So, if anyone says, "Hey, you know, it's a pothole on the intersection of X and Y roads," you can say, "Yep, it was recorded and DPW took care of it."
Great, so these, like, these emails that come in, email addresses and-
That's how it comes into our social media or our email.
Got it, yeah, this is great. Thank you, David, for staying over top of this.
And, just so you know, the DPW superintendent is putting together a list for the spring of the roads that he's gonna be working on, and he'll be coming in and one of, either the next to the meeting after, to brief the board.
I do have one question, so these emails or phone numbers, is there a way to get back to these? Like, are we creating like a little database, right? Just a generic response saying, "Thank you for notifying us, want to let you know that the work has been completed," or something along that, I mean, or that may be-
It's a work in progress.
Great to close.
This is the first step of just having it all recorded down on the, on a template. Then we'll go on and we'll make sure and-
I think most people that report a pothole when they come home that day and they don't hit it, they know it's been fixed.
As long as it's not cold patch, because that comes up right away.
But, in the middle of winter, you know, January, February, even sometimes early March, you don't have a choice but to use that.
Well, the superintendent has been very good at getting to Avon and other places to get the mix that he needs.
It's just a haul to do it.
Yeah.
Well, in the middle of winter, it doesn't stay that hot.
Nope.
Even though we have the hot box, but, you know? I don't know if they're going up there in a truck and loading it into the hot box so they get more of it, because the hot box only carries, like, you know, a couple of yards, so. You ain't going all the way to Avon with a hot box trailer, you're coming back with a couple of yards. It's unfortunate to do it that way, so I would imagine you'd probably be taking one of the trucks, bigger trucks, but, you know, if you don't have a heated bed in the middle of winter, that stuff's already getting cold on your way back, it's a little bit of a haul, you know what I mean?
We're in New England, dude, we grow potholes very well.
That's right.
You, you have to understand that it's the condition of our roads, right? We've been talking about that for a long time, actually, there's one I happen to notice over here, and I won't mention the place, but it's like, just tie the road already, right? Because the roads are in tough shape, that's why I keep emphasizing we have to try to do a better job with our infrastructure.
Yeah, if you can't get anywhere, you have a problem. It's just like, you do not have a town if you do not have potable water.
Alright.
Hey, next on the all business, we have public health excellent grant program for shared services.
Yep.
I, I set the agreement to town council, you've got the backup material here. He's redlined a couple of issues, very minor. This is a grant between New Bedford, Acushnet, and Fairhaven. All of the personnel would be part of the New Bedford personnel system. However, the Commonwealth appreciates regional agreements and will not, would rather fund grants for regional agreements. We will get the benefit, the Acushnet will get the benefit of the services, but will not have any of the negativity of having the personnel on our books.
Okay.
If someone flips and falls, it's New Bedford's workers' comp problem.
Yeah, I read, I read from this to some degree, Mr. Chairman, I, I didn't know if Mr. Korea was gonna be here. I mean, I don't know if this is something that we've already participated in, in the last three years, I know it's a three-year rolling thing.
It's a, it's a new, it's a new regional agreement, and it's new funding, but it gives, it expands our ability to respond to public health issues.
Okay, I just, I-
I would suggest that-
Says it offers regulatory mandates and expands protections and opportunities they offer residents. So, I was, I wrote, he had given an example of how a Acushnet resident would benefit from this grant.
I will have them come in. I suggest, because there's a timeframe for the application, it only requires one signature from a board of selection and one signature from a board of health per community. I would suggest that the board votes to authorize a member present when we get the final draft from town council to sign.
So moved, second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Just make sure we don't agree to pay anything that's not coming from the grant, right? Because some of the language in here, there's, there's provisions in the agreement that would cover saying that we're not subject to contingency thing, if we want to bail out, we can bail out. But one thing I don't like about some people when they do grants and they take it on their own is, we could be subject to investment of funds that we don't have. So, the way I like grants is, give me the money and I can go do what you say I could do with it, but don't make me be committed to this long term, in the next 10 years, and the next thing I know, I got, you know, 30 new employees working for the town of Acushnet because we signed on to some grant that I benefited on the grant, it's costing me a million in the end.
I will make sure to have town council, but-
There's some provisions in there, it does-
Enforce those caveats.
Yeah, I looked at, I looked at all, there are some of those provisions in there, so that made me a little bit more, you know, okay with it, it just, you don't, you gotta be careful when you do grants. I've seen communities get locked up in some of these MVP grants and stuff, and it comes back to haunt them hard, so.
You don't want an open-ended agreement.
Nope, that's usually how government does it, it's unfunded.
Right, Mr. President, Danis.
Yep.
Uh, new business, vacation scheduling. We received a memorandum from Mr. Kelly concerning the situation that we have, and I'm trying to-
As the board knows, DPWs across the state are having problems getting private contractors to assist in the plow and snow. In addition, we had three people out for legitimate reasons, medical reasons, out of, and we had one person on vacation. That left, that left us in the last snowstorm very shorthanded. In fact, we couldn't get to the library parking lot and we had to keep the library closed. I wanted just to inform the board, give the board the actual figures. One of the FMLA folks has returned. I've had a discussion with the DPW superintendent where exploring how we can take care of the workers' comp issue. The, I've talked about during negotiations, we restrict how many people can take vacation during snow and ice season and spring and fall shoulder cleanups. So you don't, right now, you have wide open, two people could take it at any point in that for vacation from DPW, and there's really no language in the AFSCME contract that controls. You can't be short-staffed like that.
Due to vacations and...
Well, not restrictions. So during negotiations, we're going to have to propose language to make sure that you restrict it during at least the snow and ice season.
All right.
Should be an interesting conversation.
Yeah.
It's hard, it's hard to do. I mean, as much as it sucks, everybody needs to realize that we are shorthanded. I know there were some complaints out there, you know, not getting out there until four or five o'clock in the afternoon. I dealt with a few of them myself from people that I know in the community, and I said, "I'll make a phone call, see what's going on", and it's just because we don't have the same folks that we used to have doing the routes. We divided up to like five different routes in town. Not talking about ours, but our contractor guys, and when we have somebody we hired new, they're not that familiar with the route. They miss a couple of roads, they take off. You know, and our DPW doesn't know it until they receive that phone call, a complaint, I should say, of, "Hey, this road wasn't done", and they get right out there. That's what happened. I think it was last Friday when we had the snow, whatever it was. And, you know, that's, that's what happens. But, I mean, we're dealing with what we're dealing with, and everybody's suffering that pain right now, and there's not much we can do about it. And I just, I don't know if I could, it's hard to restrict people from vacation time, because if somebody in September, October makes a planned vacation two or three months, four months in advance, and, you know, I don't know, it's just, it's gonna be pretty difficult to figure this out as far as restricting vacation time, in my opinion.
Most modern contracts have language that restricts it to one instead of allowing multiple vacations. And also, it gives the authority to, the appointing authority, if someone comes in and says, "I just wanna, you know, two-week cruise to the Caribbean, four islands in the Caribbean", there is language in that, in most contracts, to allow the board to say, you know, "Congratulations and put sunscreen on".
We'll see how that works out.
Next, new business, number two, we have cell phone discussions. We're exploring the possibility of giving cell phones to department heads and the selectmen.
Well, first of all, Mr. Chairman, for a number of folks, you are paying a stipend.
Right.
And what you are paying in a stipend was more than it would cost to go get a cellphone under the government. There's, cellphone companies have government plans. So when I looked at that and I saw that we were paying a stipend to folks to use their personal cellphones, then it was beyond the open meeting law issues and the discovery issues if you're in litigation. It made sense for me to present to the board this option and see if, I mean, Nick did some great work, and you look at it and it's, if you ended up paying the stipend to everybody who uses, potentially would use their personal cellphone, you're costing the town close to $6,000 more than you are paying students now.
It also helps define the question of using your own personal cellphone for town work. As you mentioned, you know, any sort of discovery, if there was litigation or something to that effect.
There's also the open meeting law where someone can ask if you use it for town business to have access to your phone and review all the files on the phone.
Correct. And in a number of businesses, employees are given work phones to use. They're not relying on their own personal phone if they work for a company.
And the town, if it's providing phones, can restrict what people can do on the phones by policy. Similar to what they, the policy that you use for computers.
I mean, look, this should not be viewed as a perk by any means, right? This is necessary for people to do business. For us, the selectmen, to access employees in, you know, if you're looking at saving six grand here, like, last week, the last meeting, you reported that we saved 1,500 bucks just cleaning up some old email addresses. Every dollar we save goes to things that, like, you know, funding the beautification committee, or all these things that we say, you know, or the extra help at the Council on Aging. You know, if we can clean up a lot of these, these cats and dogs of low-hanging fruit.
Exactly.
I might make a lot of money, but on the aggregate, I'm all for it. And again, I don't view this as a perk. I don't think anybody should look at and go, "Wow, you're a town employee. You got a town phone. Good for you." That town phone is, is ringing on the other end. And it's somebody calling, trying to get ahold of you.
Yes, and then most people are gonna end up carrying two phones, because they're gonna keep their old cellphone and they're gonna use the town phone for the town business.
So that's my feeling.
I'd rather use my town phone for my own personal use. I'm gonna use it just as, by town.
So, you wanna make a decision on Mr. Gaspar? Actually. Do you have an opinion on that? What is your opinion on this?
You know, I don't know. You know, the work, the work that was done by Nick is, first of all, I like to commend him for that work. I mean, he really did a good job laying it out with the plan, descriptions of what people are doing and things of the like. I think, you know, the only, the only snag I think that you might run into, and, you know, it's easy, I think we can easily get over it, right, is if somebody's been so used to being contacted with this number and now they're gonna call all their contacts and say, "This is no longer the number you're gonna be reaching me on. This is the number", and you'll still be receiving calls on your own phone and how much is the new one. So you're gonna get that mix of people using, you know, the personal phones versus the government phone. But I think over a little bit of time, you know, I think it ultimately would probably be a better result. You know, instead of having your personal phones.
And we'd be backing, we'd be putting a new line in the IT budget for the cellphones and backing out of the telephone line the money that was used to pay the stipends.
Yeah, sure.
You generally wanna think about this until the next meeting, or do you wanna move ahead, Rick, tonight, and make a motion to...
Conversation, did, can we add conversations with the employees that are currently getting reimbursed, and what's the attitude there? Is it gonna be, you know, mayhem for the Board of Selectmen?
I doubt it, because we're going to, it's, we're going to have to put it in the budget, so we have plenty of time between now and July 1, when we are then going to be changing to take care of it.
I would say just talk to the employees, you know, all the folks who are impacted by this. Just do a gut check. I think they should, look at it as a positive thing and then just report back to us.
Yeah, and I don't think we need to be, you know, giving everybody that works in the town. I think it's rough with department heads that utilize the phone, and, you know, we don't need to be giving every Tom, Dick and Harry a cellphone going, "Oh, yeah, it's only 25 bucks. You have a phone."
No, it's, it's for the people that you need to contact.
Right, and the plans that you're looking at, while Nick has looked at, you know, is it just, you know, text messages and phone, or is it gonna be internet-enabled and all that stuff so that people are gonna be, you know...
Modern phones are modern phones, but the important thing is it's a government plan.
You can limit the plan, though. You can have a data plan without, you know, internet.
This, this is provided by these service providers because they're working in the airways, and part of the way they sold themselves to have these abilities to communicate to the government who licensed them was they were going to provide government programs cheap.
Under, under one, just scrolling through these papers, there is a email. $29 gets you unlimited voice, unlimited text, unlimited data, and includes 11 gigabytes of mobile hotspot features. So I think they're pretty, they're open for you to use. They're open for you to use and go that way, and...
Right, because think about it, too. Say Dan's out doing a job and he needs to take a picture to send to Kathy so that she can have that saved or kind of things like that. I mean, I would assume you'd want to have something...
On internet.
Well, yeah, but...
I just know, you know, we gotta, how to regulate internet usage, right? So that we're not, people aren't doing stupid things on the internet or even dealing with the social media crap. It's not a personal phone, it's a government phone, so there's gotta be a way to keep people off, and a policy, maybe a cellphone policy, right?
It will be...
If you violate it, it'll be part of the computer social media policy.
And I have a one mock-up that will, once we get through this part, the board will have that and the board will have to approve after it goes to town council.
That's right. But I understand that some employees are gonna say, "I gotta have two phones, and I'm gonna, you know, this one is a trial" or that sort of thing. But I still think it's a cleaner way to operate, having a business phone, a town phone, it just doesn't get mired in some of the things that we talked about. So that's, that's my opinion.
If you're involved in litigation, it's a great way to segregate all of what's going on instead of having to go through 15,000 various messages.
So we'll just move this ahead to the next meeting?
Yep.
We can do any more research, but the numbers seem to work and if we can vote on it, I think at least then we'll be ready, prepared come July 1st to implement it, if we vote that way. Next on the new business, defibrillator donation. Mr. Warner?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. So there's a family in Acushnet, the Fabian family, John and Jane Fabian. His young son, early 30s, passed away of a heart, a heart event. And this was a couple of years ago, and they've created a foundation in his name, the Jacob Fabian Foundation. They've made charitable contributions, and speaking with them, they wanted to do something for the town that was in his, in his memory and his honor. And what they settled on is to provide a donation to purchase portable defibrillators to be used at Po Park, the baseball field, you know, because it's a baseball family, something that was really near and dear to his heart. And so, talking with Fire Chief Chad LeClaire from the Park Board and Mr. Kelly, the donation would go through the EMS gift fund.
The Fire...
The Fire.
Fire Department Gift Fund.
The Fire Department Gift Fund. Chief Gallagher would work with the, with the Park Department to make sure that they charge and things of that nature in the Park, in the Fairhaven, Acushnet Little League. We'd do a nice ceremony on opening day, and, you know, the town gets the town support for heart health awareness. I think it's something that's lacking here. We haven't, we don't have these this afternoon. It's either at Town Hall or at our Council on Aging, our library. That's a separate effort. But at a minimum, we could, we should be putting up signage on CPR, things of that nature. It's just, I commend the Fabian family, and sitting with them at their kitchen table is a heartbreaking story, but they're committed to raising awareness on this important issue, and I would ask the board to endorse that, to endorse their efforts and, you know, give them all the support they can. Because I think if you can get this off the ground, it's something I think they wanna take to other communities and, you know, other baseball facilities. I just read today in the Boston, Boston Globe, a young, young man in the Newton area, a basketball player, died of a heart attack, right? I mean, it just, you hope you never use them, but again, hats off to the Fabians, and I'd like to invite them in to the March, our March 29th meeting to come in and make a formal presentation to the board. They can't make it on the 15th, but I think we'll be meeting on the 19th, the 29th, rather.
29th.
And have them come in and make a formal presentation to the board, and Chief Gallagher's running the traps on, you know, purchasing that.
Mr. Chairman, the technicalities on it are, it'll go through the fire gift account. They'll donate the money. The chief will purchase, the chief will purchase all of the, not only the major equipment, but all of the ancillary stuff. It comes with a cabinet that can secure it and keep it in the various places. Chad has already determined where the location, the best locations would be with the chief, and this would be the first step in going forward. You folks would have to vote when they come in on accepting the gift for this purpose, and then you go forward, the chief goes forward and purchases the equipment, and then it's installed, and then there has to be some training.
Very good. Well, I think the board would truly welcome the Fabian family come in on March 29th.
Thank you.
For this donation.
Maybe we're gonna have a motion to invite the Fabian family in on the 29th, and that'll get the process officially kicked off. So moved.
No second. Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
Amendment of Public Works, Order of Assessment. So a privilege fee for Nine Hathaway Road. No limited package.
It's just a tie-in for...
It's a tie-in for Nine Hathaway Road. $14,011.57. We have a motion to order the assessment.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Time to the town administrator report.
Mr. Chairman, I've been, I've been here freely.
Has it been that long?
Still haven't found. Some of the items in the report are already out of date. On the to be accomplished, I met with the Stewarts and the union rep from AFSCME today, and we're scheduling the others right now. I've keep, as far as the financial issues go, we have closed the books. Schedule A has been filed with DOR. The balance sheet should be done by tomorrow or the next day, and the information has been provided to the schools, too, so they can do the DESI Schedule 19. And, uh, the information has been provided to the schools too, so they can do the DESI Schedule 19.
Alright.
This is, uh, uh, actions that should have been done prior to, uh, December 31 and in the beginning of January, but because you've got a brand-new staff and, uh, there was some vacancies, uh, in, in this period of time, it's been done. And, uh, now we can use it as a basis to do what we need to do going forward. Uh, we've got two items to determine and we will know, uh, our revenue projections. So I'll be able, probably in two to three days, to send it electronically to the board. Uh, I have to, uh, definitely commend the, uh, finance team, the principal assessor, the accountant, the treasurer collector and the assistant accountant. They've been working very hard on this. Just so the board knows, as far as, uh, local revenue, I don't think it's a decrease. I think it's gonna be flat, but that, that's a positive because originally we thought it was going to decrease. I've had multiple meetings with the NFP, our insurance consultant. Uh, Harvard came back to us, they reduced from 15 to 14.5, the increase. We sent it back to them. We're investigating, uh, some changes, uh, as far as the health insurance for retirees. There's a better, new program that's being marketed that would cost the town less and would reduce, uh, some of the out-of-pocket expenses for the retirees. And other than that, it would provide the same level of service.
Okay.
This is gonna be a moving target. Part of the reason it's gonna be a moving target is fiscal year 20, you had 52,000 left in the health insurance account. Fiscal year 21, you had 37 left at the end of the year. This year, between July 1 and March now, you've added, only in that period of time, you've added 12 subscribers to the HMO and four subscribers to the PPO. And right now, uh, I'm looking at a potential deficit of between 20 and 30,000 dollars to the insurance account for this year. Going forward, that's why we've gotta get the increase down. And so, uh, I'll be probably dealing with it daily until I get it down to at least single digits on the, uh,
On the increase for?
On the increase for the health insurance and the savings. I'm trying to get it to the point where the savings on the new program for the retirees would wash the increase or get it as close as possible.
You mentioned we have 170 retirees or is it?
172 on, on the, uh, enhanced program. That's people who receive Medicare and then have the enhanced program, which is a wraparound insurance. Uh, besides that, uh, you can see in the report, uh, I've dealt with MIA, there is going to be no change for the workers' comp, IOD liability and unemployment insurances. So that's, uh, we've got a workers' comp audit coming up, but I think we're gonna be fine with that. So some of the budget busters are not, uh, coming to fruition. The, uh, I'm waiting until Friday when payroll comes to let you folks know about the cost of the latest snowstorm.
That's a moving target.
Yep, snow and ice.
That's a moving target.
Yep. The Fire Department has told me they're gonna need a article for breathing units. That'll be 320,000. And, uh, the assessors are going to need an updated software that'll be maybe 20 grand. We'll know for sure when I get the figures. I want the Monet settlement on the next, uh, agenda. Our lawyers have finished with it. We are waiting for the signature to come back. I don't want the board to sign until Mr. Monet signs. Uh, we talked about the defibrillators, the email addresses is going on. I have, uh, in regards to vacations, uh, Nick and I are working on a calendar for all department heads to list their vacations and major times out of the office. That'll be available to the board members. So you're not chasing a department head who's not here.
Did that today.
Well, and, uh, the, I, the meeting with DOT, uh, they postponed it. And, uh, we interviewed folks for the Assistant Treasurer Collector's Office. I have a candidate, I'm in discussions with them, uh, and we will check the references and hopefully the next meeting, they'll be able to come into the board and we'll fill that void. This person has extensive experience with munis and payroll.
Excellent, that fits right in there.
So it will be someone, if we can, uh, they would like to come in at a step other than step one and, uh, they're checking the benefits package to see if it fits with their, uh, issue or whether they'd have to take benefits from their husband's, uh, health insurance.
The Assistant Treasurer Collector's non-union, right? Is he exempt?
Yep. Right then.
And, uh, I'm trying to see if there's anything else I haven't covered. You've got my schedule, oh, on the back of, uh, your things, there are some, uh, information about grant programs, et cetera, that I have seen, uh, that you should, uh, know about and, uh, also there's going to be, I asked you to go to the MMA website and look. There's a virtual, uh, legislative town hall coming up and, uh, you can register for that and, uh, talk to the, not only our state legislative delegation, but the region's state legislative delegation and bring up issues if you wanna bring up issues.
So Mr. Kelly, with these, these grants applications, will get these opportunities off to the?
It's already been forwarded to the right departments. But I, I wanna make sure you folks are in the loop.
Right, thank you.
And if there's something you want further information about, the staff will be glad to research it and get back to you. But I, I figure you, if you wanna ask questions, uh, if you wanna ask questions or have us pursue something, we have to give you the information that, that we are, have access to. I'm going to be, uh, on the 18th, I believe it is in March, I'm going to an MMA meeting. And we will see from there what we're able to bring back as far as some of those opportunities.
So like, for instance, I'm looking at the Culver vacation that's here.
No, DPW already has been.
I guess, you know, like for Dan, check this out, but, you know, with the Department of Fish and Gaming seeks proposals. I think Lake Street, I think we've got some Culver problems over there, right?
Part of the issue is, uh, we have to make sure some grants, you just apply for other grants, you have to have the engineering behind it front before you do it.
That should, that's ready.
Some are ready.
Alright, good, thank you.
Very, very good. Once again, for information, all the boards and commissions have vacancies. Please consider serving your community by submitting a letter of interest to the board to select them. The Agricultural Commission has two alternative vacancies. Beautification Committee has six vacancies. Community Preservation Committee, one. Housing Authority, one. Cultural Council, 13. Open Space Committee, one vacancy. Historical Commission has four vacancies and as we've learned tonight, the FinCom has one vacancy. Also too, we're still looking for someone who may be interested in being the town moderator at our upcoming Spring Town Meeting, which is in May, May 9th to be exact. And, um, if any interest can go to, send a letter to the board to select them.
Yeah, gentlemen, a couple things. On the town moderator, if we can just double-check, I don't know if Jane, I think we might have talked about it.
It has to be a town resident.
It has to be a town resident, so we couldn't borrow from another town. Okay, okay, I'll take that out of the equation. Then secondly, with some of these committees, do we have, and I guess you'd have to have a parent involved, or like the beautification committee, right? For younger kids who might have an interest in serving the town, would we be open to that? Provided that there was parental supervision and some type of way, you know, like, I just feel like that's a committee that might lend itself to younger kids who wanna do something, have an impact. Um, just throw that out there as a parent of younger children, I know they're, I hear from my two, geez, what can we do in town? You know, like, stuff like that, which I think is pretty cool. Maybe there's an opportunity there that we haven't thought of, you know?
And other towns, they coordinate with the scouts.
With the scouts?
To do stuff like that.
We don't wanna have a scout troop in town.
So maybe that's, we can send a note to the school.
But Earth Day's coming up.
I was just gonna mention that for.
Town cleanup.
Yeah.
Put on the rubber gloves.
Is that April 22nd?
Get out there and start cleaning.
Yeah, remember we used to head that up. I don't know who's doing it now.
I don't even know if we did that last year.
We might.
Covered. I think I might have pictured.
Might not have done it the last two years. I've done it.
Yeah.
Couple of times.
I did it once, done by my area, but, um, I'm trying to think, I don't think we did it since, like, since the COVID.
Probably the last couple of years, but anyway, it's coming up.
But yeah.
And that's usually, it's usually headed up by the conservation agent, usually organizes certain things with certain groups and, you know, they get out there and, you know. Pass out big garbage bags and, you know, so many routes that they're out where the, you know, the problem areas are. And, you know, I've done my share of, uh, you know, I did the Riverside Park down here a couple of times. I did, unfortunately, the halfway road with the shop corners. People tend to be more prone to be throwing stuff out the windows, not so pleasant, but, um, you know, it's great when a, when a community gets involved in those kind of things and spends a little bit of time cleaning up. Unfortunately, people toss things out the windows, but be surprised what you find on the side of the road.
And the future business, we have a select, a selectmen's meeting, March 15th, 22 at 4:00 PM. We're gonna have presentation of school budgets and discussions of other town budgets.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I will be forwarding the revenue estimate now that we've locked it, almost completely locked it down. And I will be probably forwarding you a budget overview of all departments and where I think that the requests of the, uh, department heads are out of line with the revenue, uh, projections. And, uh, that, uh, will, also all the budgets will be locked down by that point. 'Cause some of the stuff we've been waiting for, including the insurances, we're gonna have to lock them down anyway. Even if we change it on the floor.
Once we know what our revenues really are, right? And, and then we'll go from there. I mean, I'm a little disappointed that we haven't reviewed board budgets, but I had a talk with Mr. Kelly yesterday and he assured me that once we got the revenues locked down, um, that's where we can really hit the ground running and take a deep dive into some of the, you know, obviously we have a, I'm looking for really anything, right? And then you're gonna have those, as Mr. Kelly likes to call them, budget busters that may impact us. And we obviously have the school department that we need to be concerned with, so there's, it's, it's gonna take a little bit of work to get us there.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Gaspar is correct. Uh, we did have the discussion, but if you hadn't closed the books until this week, you're not going to be able to get any valid revenue estimates.
Correct.
Correct, and I've also.
Also on the agenda, I'm going to ask that the reporter, the safety committee on those streets by the New England Farm.
Definitely.
I want the board to consider re, uh, modifying or rescinding the, uh, mask mandate for the COA and the library to be on optional type of thing because they're still under that provision. And, uh, the Monet, uh, signature.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, just one quick comment, it's been approached by the, uh, FinCom chairman, Dr. Boucher, and, um, he just wanted to throw out there if we wanted to participate in a joint meeting with, uh, school committee, FinCom and ourselves when they present on the 23rd. And it's just out for, to think about it.
Okay.
And, uh, go from there, 'cause at some point, you know, I know if we have a joint meeting, we're gonna have to post and I don't know if it's two days or seven days, like, you know.
Mr. Chairman, uh, is there a location that the board prefers since this is a senior board?
We usually do it at the school department and the library 'cause it's big enough and it accommodates, um, all of those folks. I just don't know if that date, uh, works for me. I think it is the 23rd.
Yeah, you mentioned the 23rd.
Yeah. It's a little tricky next 30 days.
Yeah, there.
You know, my schedule is just a little, plus, uh, China. I'm hoping that our meetings jump around my vacations.
We can work it all out, of course.
China, China get the revenue projections and get an idea of, you know, where that discussion's gonna flow from where our budgets are coming in, you know?
Absolutely.
Right, sounds good. We got a hurdle, but I'm sure we'll get through it.
Hey gentlemen, they have a Marshall Tidere.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And have a good evening, everyone.